We were looking for one too.
All right, so at this time I will recall the Suffolk Central School District of Education meeting Tuesday, February 6th, 2018. Let the record reflect continuing that all board members present with the exception of Mr. Bassmore who is not feeling so much more ready. So if we could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our glasses are not on. Yes, because right there.
Good evening. Here is going out to high school. Tomorrow evening there's pause hours and if there is snow, if, they'll be moved to this Thursday. On Tuesday, February 13th, there's a world language elementary carnival at the high school. During this evening, elementary school children will have the opportunity to explore all the different languages the Suffolk High School has to offer with a variety of activities and different food tasting opportunities to high standard world language. On Friday, February 16th, there's an elective fair during lunch in the gym for ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders so they can look for some different electives that they can choose to take next year. Finally, I just want to highlight something I didn't really get to talk about last meeting because it wasn't official at the time, but about two weeks ago, the tag, the teens that got distracted driving, had a distracted driving victim come in and give a presentation. Her name was Jacey Good and unfortunately she explained her story and where she was the only one to survive in the accident and her parents unfortunately passed away. However, during this presentation, she was able to turn the tragic story into a memorable one and she was able to successfully bring attention to the issue of distracted driving routine today. And through her engaging, meaningful, and truly moving presentation, she made a great impact on the eleven and twelve grades of the assembly. If you get a chance, I highly recommend you remember her story, Jacey Good. That's all and I'm leaving.
1.08 minutes of the regular meeting of January 9th, 2018. Chair entertain a motion to accept those units as stated. Teresa?
I'm on it.
Tommy? Am I? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Yeah. 1.09 superintendent's comments.
I would just like to remind everybody about the STEAM Expo that's coming up on March 3rd. Hopefully, everybody can turn out. It's a great experience, the kids, the teachers. It's really remarkable what our kids do and would be great if we had a wonderful turnout like we did last year. And then also on February 16th is Rockland Read-In Day. I don't know how many board members will have the opportunity to read in classes. I think I've scheduled for 15 classes, so it's a great day to read to the kids and hopefully can join in the festivities.
If anybody does go and read, just send out a resume when you're going in or have you. But it's awesome. And our reason, I think, is pajamas. So you have to have pajamas.
I'm sorry, why are we sending an email that we're going through?
We always send it to them.
I've never done that. It's been four years. Plus, the parents go in and read in the buildings without sending any emails. I'm gonna have to refrain from that because I decide last minute what I could put in. Maybe after the time.
All right, 1.10 public participation. These are public participation as the action items. Those are the items, the timing, which is 2.01, 2.16, 2.01 through 2.16. If you would like to make a comment with respect to any of those items, please step up to the podium, state your name, school affiliation, maybe some contact information or what have you. You have three minutes to address your remarks to the board event. And again, pursuant to policies, 1230, 1400, 3240, please refrain from making any comment with respect to any school district staff, teacher, administrator, or student. Action items. Okay, well, it's not here. It's not even getting out. Thank you. All right, so I'll close the public participation, 1.10. Action items, I wasn't asked to call any items.
I'd love to call some action items.
Okay.
2.02, 2.04, and 2.12. I also would like to make a motion before we begin.
Hold on, 2.02, 2.04, 2.12. So with respect to the balance of the action items.
I'd like to make a motion before we do that. Please, motion to postpone voting today on number 2.02 due to...
Hold on, we're not, we're not, we'll take care of the other ones first.
If you so choose.
So 2, that's, okay, so I'll use the consent agenda with respect to 2.01, 2.03, 2.05 through 2.11, and then 2.13 through 2.16. Okay. And with respect to those items, chair entertain a motion to accept those items as stated. Anybody?
Whoops.
Oh, no, who?
Matt.
Matt? Sorry. I heard it from over there, but, all right, Matt, second. Paul, there you go. All right, any discussion on those items? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Okay, 2.02.
No, because my motion, my motion is before.
Your motion is not actually, it's actually out of order, so 2.02.
No, no, no. It's a motion not to carry the vote, so I move to postpone the vote on 2.02 at such time when this contract is up for renewal, which would be in a year and a half. My motion is to postpone the vote, that's why I have to make it before we vote.
Well, we're not gonna, we moved to accept it, then you can move to table it, the vote, and then we vote on that and then we vote on the motion.
If I move to table it, it's too late after we move to accept it. That's why the motion...
We're not moving to accept it. We're moving, we're, okay.
So I'm trying to delay the vote, that's all.
Other your way, other your way.
It's not my way, I've been told by...
There's already a second.
So the motion is...
No, so the motion is...
I'm sorry.
There's no second.
I don't know if anyone knows what's going on.
2.02, 2.02, chair entertain a motion to accept 2.02 as stated. Teresa, second.
Second.
Paul, I saw you raise your hands.
You can get that one.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Sorry, is there opportunity to discuss?
Discussion.
Okay.
Just make sure it's a discussion and it's a debate, so just...
Right, it's a discussion in general terms that the contract we're voting to renew is up for renewal in July of 2019 and hence my original motion to postpone the vote until a year from now when we would be at least half a year, six months ahead of the expiration in the interest of having more information by then and being able to do it at the time when it's due.
Okay, any other comment? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, 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 opposed?
I oppose.
Opposed, one opposed, that would be two, three, four, five ayes. So 2.04, chair entertain a motion, 2.04, to accept 2.04 as stated. Let's make it easy. Teresa, 2.04. Paul, would you second?
Yes.
Second, any discussion?
Discussion, yes, I have questions. Perhaps we can have a little bit more information, some of it was discussed during the budget presentation, but I had requested more information regarding the PBL program and thank you for sending the link that you sent following the January meeting. The link was very general, was not very specific, did not really teach me or inform me about how we plan to evaluate the program's success and what we hope to accomplish, what are our goals from increasing our budget by this particular position. Not discussing particular employees obviously, but we were told today in the budget presentation that it would be a salary and benefits for a position that would normally not exist, not necessarily the same person, and I'd like to know what do we hope to accomplish from this, what our goals are, how are we going to provide this person amongst our schools, and how are we going to evaluate this success?
So the position really came out of the strategic planning process. So in our strategic plan, we have as one of our main priority goals to provide authentic learning opportunities for our students and the opportunity to pursue personal interests. So we've done that, you know, really remarkably well for the short amount of time we've had strategic planning, but we've done it in pockets. We haven't had a cohesive approach to providing those opportunities for all of our students K-12. So we haven't, the reach, STEAM Expo is a great example, we have some great examples of how we've given kids opportunities for authentic learning experiences, we have the 20% time and passion projects we presented to the board last spring, other great examples. But as I said, it's in pockets, it's not widespread. So coming out of strategic planning, one of the things the principals asked for was some support and some guidance in that, the area of how do we provide kids these opportunities on a more systematic basis? So PBL is a, you know, national, international movement going on right now that other people are doing really, really well. So it gives us an opportunity to learn from them and to expand our own knowledge and opportunities both for our staff and our students. We found from the literacy coaching model that that job embedded, elbow-to-elbow support for teachers really makes a tremendous difference. It's a different type of PD. It's not, I went to a conference and I came back with this great idea and boom, here I got. It really, it guides teachers, it supports teachers, it's a real, you know, it's a give-and-take relationship. Each teacher brings, each coachee, person that's being coached, brings their content knowledge, their expertise, and sort of their vision of what they want it to be. The coach then helps give them the tools to make it happen. So in what we call gold standard PBL, there's a couple pieces. It's not just about the project the kids do, it's about creating a culture, an environment of students thinking independently, thinking about critical problems that go beyond the classroom, things that have an impact on either their community or, you know, it can be from their community to global impact. And there's also a component of really gold standard PBL where we talk about community relationships, which is another goal of our strategic plan is to strengthen our community partnerships. And that's something that takes a lot of time, that many, that is a real challenge for a teacher who's, you know, working full-time and has 100 kids or, you know, at the secondary level has over 100 kids and the elementary level is with their kids all day. It's hard to develop those community relationships and so that's another place that having a separate person, a coach, who's not directly responsible for students can really help to cultivate those community partnerships. So there's a lot of different pieces that go into it. It's first and foremost, it's tied to the strategic plan and provides the opportunities for our kids that our strategic plan has said we want to have. It provides the PD in what we consider to be a model that has worked very successfully here. I mean, it's a model that works successfully everywhere, it's a research-based model, but we've also seen the benefits out of here. And then it also hits on one of our other strategic goals, which is to further develop the community partnerships.
We're hoping to carry this, are planning to carry this program into K through 12?
Yes.
How is one person going into all those grades and all those buildings?
So the difference is not every teacher and not every kid will be touched next year. So we'll start with a cohort and we use, this is the model we used in technology, we did it with the Lyric a couple years ago where we had someone from the Lyric come in and we'll bring, we'll have a cohort, a starting cohort. And then that's usually the first cohort is a very much an interest-based, a volunteer-based cohort, folks who want to do this, who they're ready to take this next step. And the coach would work closely with the cohort, the teachers in the cohort, and their colleagues. And then you kind of go through phases. So the first phase will be that initial cohort, it usually spreads then and, you know, someone says, "Oh, I saw what you were doing, that's so awesome, when is it my turn?" And then you grow it that way, you grow it through the cohorts. And we saw that happen with our technology cohorts a few years ago.
Where do we start? Where's the plan to start?
What do you mean?
We're starting with which buildings, which...
It'll be, really be interest-based, so it'll be based on who's interested and what's doable. So for example, if we were to get one teacher from each building or two teachers from each building, that's a little harder than if we had a cohort. If we had a mini cohort, say four high school teachers or four middle school teachers who really wanted to do it, we might start there and then in a couple other buildings. So because it's interest-based, I can't tell you exactly who it's gonna be.
This person, this is becoming their full-time job?
In September.
Right.
Yes, so...
Should this be passed by the Board of Education? We've created a position that we did not have before, that's a full-day position. So they have possibly eight teachers, as the example you gave, to work with for how long and what are they doing the rest of the time?
So there's the one-on-one time of teachers, there's the time in classrooms to build the culture, that's a big aspect I didn't talk so much about because it's different for kids. It's a different experience for the kid, it's not, "Oh, the teacher told me to do this, so I'm gonna do it." So there's a lot of independent thinking on part of the kid and a lot of out-of-the-box thinking. So part of that is establishing culture. So the coach would work with the teacher in the classroom with the kids to establish their culture. And then they still get prep time and things like that, but also during the time that they're not directly with teachers or kids is when they're working on those community partnerships.
Can you, can you explain how that works, community partnerships? An example of what we would do?
Yeah, so they would, for instance, go to local restaurants. So, well, let me start with the project. So the kids have a project. So the project involves something related to the environment, so that they would go to our local agencies here in Rockland or right over the border or, you know, places that we can, that we can interact and go to those partners and say, you know, "We have a project, they really want to work on such and such," and so our local arborist comes in to work with them on that.
So inviting organizations to come into the buildings, not going to them in terms of the students coming?
I mean, it goes both ways, but it will probably more often than not be them coming to us.
Because then there's a budget for additional trips, right?
For field trips, so.
Right. So we do not already do project-based learning in our classrooms as it is, as a district?
We don't do it systematically.
And how about our enrichment programs? I know that exists at least in all the elementaries where we have something like, they have it in the classroom and likewise in the other buildings. Is that all project-based learning?
We don't have any systematic project-based learning. We have pockets of things that are happening. We have 20% time, we have passion projects, we have maker spaces, we don't have anything systematic. And honestly, true gold standard PBL, we have very little, if any.
So my question that I asked before is how are you going to evaluate its success? Because obviously it's a burden on the budget, it's something new we didn't do, it's something not required, it's additional and great sounding, but how are we actually gonna evaluate if it's working for our students?
So we really have to, two measures, the first is the strategic plan. Part of our strategic plan measures the opportunities for authentic learning and pursuing personal interests. That's something we've established as a metric of our strategic plan.
Is that measurable?
We measured it last year, well, we measured the teacher's participation in it last year. So we did a survey at the end of the year last year, we did a professional development survey. In that professional development survey, some of the questions included if the teachers had received PD in those areas, if they, and for the areas that we had coaches last year, like the literacy coach, we have a technology coach, we work with the Lyric, we have an E&amp;L coach who we work with, that's an outsider who comes in, an consultant, and we had teachers evaluate their experience with those coaches in terms of how their time with the coaches impacted student achievement.
The teacher feedback, any other measure of evaluation?
And the strategic plan.
So we don't have a goal in terms of student performance?
It's associated with the opportunities for authentic learning assignment, learning opportunities and pursuing personal interests.
What are we doing for the vacancy that this will create? Just in general terms, no specific names?
I don't know that I can answer that.
Can anybody speak?
We're gonna use current staff and reassign current staff to cover the things.
Multiple staff will go to the one school or one person will go to the one school, what's the plan?
One person who goes to the one school.
One person already on staff somewhere else?
Correct.
And we've evaluated that that building will not miss that person for the additional time?
No, we've had extensive discussions with the building principal there and he's comfortable with, and certainly very, very extremely supportive of this initiative and of the person doing it.
Not splitting a phys ed teacher?
Not splitting a phys ed teacher, this is, one phys ed teacher may be replaced by another single phys ed teacher.
Who's currently where?
I'm not gonna say.
No, I'm saying who's currently in an elementary building?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna...
Okay, so, so we're taking from one building...
The reason why, the reason why we say that is because we want to make sure we're respectful.
No, 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 I'll...
They need to hear that information from us before they hear it.
Right, but we're taking someone who's not needed in a building into the vacancy period?
Yeah, we regularly reassign staff from buildings, building discipline, we have some of that.
So it's a building where we have more than one teacher, I would assume, because we're not leaving that?
There is no other building where we only have, where we have less than two phys ed.
Two phys ed. Thank you for the answers. You should...
Thank you, I know we've had some discussion on this project-based learning, it sounds awesome, so, thank you, it was worth the time. All right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed, abstentions?
Abstentions.
Abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay, we're at, hold on. 2.12, chair entertain a motion to accept 2.12 as stated. That would be Teresa, second. Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion, Amari?
I just have a question, anyone can answer. This was updated today, this morning, I could not really see, I know Angela sent an email. If you could just, anybody explain to us the difference between the document that was posted originally and the one that replaced it, because I couldn't, I couldn't see the difference. I couldn't, I couldn't access, yeah, but I couldn't access the old document to compare them, so, because it was renewed from the one that was posted.
I'll tell you, I'll answer. It's the last two...
Because I hadn't printed it.
Yeah, the last two items here, it appears that they were flipped.
Yes.
So if you've read it, it would appear as though money was being put into a fund that had nothing to do with the purchase?
So what did it read first?
Well, whatever...
Yeah, the old one?
Yeah, the old one.
Because I hadn't printed it, I watched you took the new one, you can't see the whole one.
Yeah, I know. So basically, you know, you were putting money, you were, if you read it quick, you would be putting money into health insurance to pay for signs and banners, okay? But in fact, I guess, that was the typo, I'm guessing, and it was flipped, and we caught it earlier today or yesterday, and it was updated and that's...
All right, and it was just the last item?
And I know I'm speaking for you, Dr. Adams, but...
You're right, Matt, the last two were flipped.
It didn't work earlier than...
The last two were inadvertently flipped.
The signs and banners were where the cost of books was and vice versa. Exactly.
Instead of it going into the fund to pay for the signs and banners, it showed originally that it was coming out of that.
Oh, okay, so it was reversed sideways?
Correct. Yes, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Yes. Okay, 2.0, no, sorry, 3.01. This is public participation as to any school district business, not just the ones that are in the action items. So a school district business, again, this session will last no longer than 30 minutes. If you have any questions, comments, please step up to the podium, state your name, school affiliation, perhaps some contact information so we can get back to you with any questions or a member of the staff can get back to you with any questions or comments. Pursuant to policies, 1230, 1400, 3240, please, don't make any comment with respect to any school district personnel, staff, teacher, staff, student, or likewise, and... So? I know someone wants to talk.
I'm a senior at Suffolk High School and I have run under Coach Biddy's coaching for the past four years. He is much more than just a coach, however. Through the past four years, he has taught us all leadership, respect, and what it truly means to be a part of a team. He includes everyone on the team, every practice we run and every meet is held, he always makes sure that everyone on the team gets an opportunity to run and to improve. Coach Biddy doesn't care about your skill level in sport unlike other coaches. If you're committed to the sport, then he's committed to you. Most coaches don't care about anyone other than varsity kids, but Biddy makes sure that every kid on the team is healthy and progressing the way that he knows they can, and if they're not, then they will soon enough. He pushes us to be the best that we possibly can. Not many coaches can turn the worst kid on the team into a Division I runner, but he has time to time again. None of us would be the way that we are today without Coach Biddy. He's created not only one of the most successful dynasties that Suffolk has ever had, but he also created a family. Everything I do is with this team, and I don't believe we would all be so close if not for Coach Biddy. He's been here for 50 years, he's seen runners come and go, but he still keeps in touch with them today because he cares. It's not just running to him, his team is a part of his life. Keep Coach Biddy where he belongs.
My name is Jimmy Gerhart, I live in New York. I married my college sweetheart and cross-country teammate. We have two perfect three-year-old twin daughters and I ran for Mr. Biddy from 1989 to 1994. This is my personal story, this is my tribute to Mr. Biddy through my own eyes. My particular story may be unique, but I'm not special. Everyone has their own Mr. Biddy story and how he affected their lives. This is mine. Before I begin, I want to establish a genuine belief I hold. Mr. Biddy doesn't really know that much about mine. As far as I can tell, 50 years ago, he mapped out a four, five, seven, and 11-mile course through the streets of Suffolk. Every day he picks you a course, tells you to run as hard as you can, and you're on the four o'clock bus home. That's not what this is about. Mr. Biddy is not a sophisticated or technical coach. Instead, he unleashes the highest potential of his athletes through his enduring belief in them. He believes everyone has the potential to be great, anyone can be to success, not only as an athlete, but as a person. He told us over and over again, it's most important to be a good person, next to be a good student, and last to be a good athlete. This is surprising advice from a man who's the most successful coach in any sport in New York State history. Building and shaping athletes is his third priority. I first met Mr. Biddy at a junior high cross-country meet in 1989 when I was in the eighth grade. After watching me race, he asked me if I'd join the winter track team at the high school. The very first time I ever met him, with just one question, I knew he believed in me. From 1986 to 1995, the Suffolk Boys Cross Country streak won 132 duels in a row. That win streak is a perfect symbol of what it means to be a part of Suffolk Cross Country. It's a legacy you inherit from those who came before you and it's a responsibility to preserve for those who come after you. The biggest test of that streak came in 1991 when I was in the 10th grade. We faced an intimidating North Rockland opponent who went on to finish second in the state that year. At the time, we were nobody. We were proved to have a bright future, but we were a very dim present. We were proved to have a bright future, but we were a very dim present. On either that race, Mr. Pointed, Mr. Biddy pointed at me and gave me the simplest and only advice I needed. You will win. That day, I never doubted myself. Mr. Biddy created winning to be a preordained destiny. Mr. Biddy believed in me. I'm proud to say we graduated with our piece of the streak intact. I'll never forget how many wins we had when we graduated, 102 in a row. It's the PIN code on my ATM card. When I was a senior in 1993, we were heavily favored to win the state meet. There was no pep talk, there was no strategizing. The only thing Mr. Biddy said to us was to remember our Suffolk Cross-Country team shirts, so we'd all match when we stepped on the stage to accept our plaque.
It's not fair.
No, no, he believed in us. In 1994, the spring of my senior year, I had trouble at home. I told Mr. Biddy I needed a place to sit. Without hesitation, he took me in. Every morning, Mrs. Biddy made me breakfast, and Mr. Biddy drove me to school. Every day after practice, he took the two of us home. He never asked when I was going to leave. I knew he was there for me as long as I needed him to be. He still believed in me. In 1997, in one of the lowest moments of my life, I believed college to be hospitalized. I wasn't sick in a conventional sense, I had a disease of emptiness and darkness, a complete devastation of self-worth. You can't possibly imagine the feeling I had when Mr. Biddy walked into my hotel hospital. Here was a man I emulated and looked up to. He'd only known me at my best, I was embarrassed and ashamed at what I'd become. He sat next to me, he reminded me I was important. For a moment, he gave me back my worth, he gave me hope. I needed someone to believe in me when I no longer believed in myself. That was Mr. Biddy. When I sat down to write this speech, and I'm not making this up, an old Beach Boys song came on in the background. The chorus caught my attention. God only knows what I would be without you. That moment was a cosmic coincidence where the outside world somehow understands what you're feeling inside. Honestly, in my life, I don't know what I would have become without him. I hope it's clear what Mr. Biddy is meant to be. Without exaggeration, he has been the most important, formative, and influential person in my life. But my time has passed, there's a new generation of athletes whose future you hold in your hands. This is a group of freshman athletes who want to finish their careers with Mr. Biddy. Hold on to him as long as possible. Don't hurt these kids. Don't deprive them of the privilege of having someone believe in them when they need it most. I know there's a lot of enthusiastic kids here, and I'm not trying to make a spectacle, I'm just trying to make a point. Everyone here who wants to see Mr. Biddy stand, just, just please stand. Don't make any noise. You can sit down. If there's anyone here who wants to see him go, I want to hear your voice too, you can stand up. History is filled with people willing to fight harder to defend what is theirs than people will fight to take it away. That's what Rock, North Rockland, Clark Star Nerd could never understand. We don't run for ourselves, but for a family that now spans generations, finding boys and men that have never even met each other. We only know the names. Hagan, Van Leeuwen, Cox, Gagliano, Rumanyuk, Lowland, Horton. Brothers in spirit, dedication and purpose. There's only one constant across all those years, Mr. Biddy. He believed in all of us. Now, I don't know if any of this matters, I hope that you have an open mind and you will listen to what we all have to say tonight. I want to believe that you will make the right choice. But perhaps this is one of those moments in life that no matter how hard you prepare, no matter how hard you try, you just can't force the outcome to bend in your direction. So be it. Despite the circumstances, this is one of the great honors of my life to be able to speak here tonight on behalf of Mr. Biddy. My words aren't for you anyway, they're for him. Thank you.
If I could, if you ask me three minutes, I see there's a lot of people who want to speak, probably more sitting down who want to speak in the last 30 minutes, so, just to be respectful and mindful of everybody's time, I would be happy to speak. So, three minutes if you could.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Amy Briggs. I'm a lifelong resident of Suffolk, and I have two children that go to school in Suffolk now, one in the high school and one in the middle school. I'd like to clear something up right now. Before I was Amy Briggs, I was Amy Gutioni, and yes, Andy Gutioni is my brother, the A.D. here in Suffolk. Just want to put that out there now. Long before my brother was the A.D., Joe Biddy was my track coach. And I ran for four years for him, I ran indoor track for him for four years, and he was a great coach, and he coached me to be an all-county, all-league, all-section, state, and national competitor. However, I think that what's going on here in this town right now is crazy. I think that there's a lot of people with a lot of passion and emotion, and I understand emotion, and I respect passion. However, I think there's a lot of people that are passionate about something that they don't truly understand. There are a handful of people in this room that really understand the situation and what has gone on and why the decision has been made that has been made, and I and all of you are not those people. I think that things have gotten a little out of hand. I'm on social media, I've seen the petitions, and I've seen all the posts, and I understand, I understand how people are feeling. However, I think that people need to step back a little bit and realize that they don't really know what's going on, and they never will, because they're not privy to that information. They, it's, it's a, when it's personnel matters, it's private, and what really astounds me is that there are so many people that I know are educators that have jumped on this bandwagon and become part of this flock of sheep that are saying, you know, do this, do this, and reinstate him. Shame on you, because you, all people, should know that that's the way it is. Personnel matters are private, you're never going to know, just as you are afforded that same privacy in your own school districts. I think that, it was really interesting, I pulled up and I saw, one of the high school kids told me the sign, there it is, "Nobody Knows Success." I think it's interesting, because I don't believe, and I really can't believe that you all believe, that one person is greater than the overall group. And that's my opinion. I think that, you know, that was, that was a little bit struck me as I was driving in tonight. I, I really hoped that one day I would be first in line to make a glowing speech for Mr. Biddy at his retirement, and it's unfortunate to me that I'm here making this speech in front of you in the Board of Education. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Frank Barry, and I graduated from Suffolk in 1993. A few days ago, I was flipping through some old cross-country packets that Mr. Biddy would prepare for us at the end of each season. The packets included our record of accomplishments alongside teams from the past, and it also included newspaper clippings from our season. I noticed a 1992 Journal News story about our six-year dual-meet streak that Jimmy mentioned. I was co-captain of that team, and I was quoted talking about the responsibility we felt to keep the streak alive because of the bond we felt with past Suffolk teams. My quote of the story was, "They've come back and supported us and cheered us on like a family." That sense of family was created and nurtured by Mr. Biddy, something all of us on the team felt, profoundly affected my life, hence why I'm here tonight. For many of us, Mr. Biddy was something of a second father. When we doubted ourselves, as Jimmy said, he helped us believe in ourselves. When our schoolwork was not going well, he counseled us. When we acted like jerks, which we did, he let us have it. And when one of us got into trouble, as Jimmy mentioned, he and Mrs. Biddy opened their doors to their own home until things got better. By doing that, Mr. Biddy not only helped out a kid in need, he showed the rest of us what it means to support the people we care about. His devotion to us inspired our devotion to each other, and we came to see each other as brothers. In the grand scheme of things, high school athletic accomplishments aren't worth much in themselves, but how they are accomplished is worth everything. By learning to push ourselves beyond our limits, Mr. Biddy taught us what becomes possible with hard work. By learning how to push each other and help teammates fulfill their potential, Mr. Biddy taught us the real meaning of leadership. By learning how to handle setbacks and defeats, Mr. Biddy taught us the power of perseverance. And by learning how to fully devote ourselves to a common mission, Mr. Biddy taught us how the sum of the whole is always greater than the sum of the parts. Whatever success I've achieved in life, I owe in no small part to those lessons. And it would be easy to say that Mr. Biddy's accomplishments beat for himself, but the truth is, his greatest accomplishments don't hang on any banner, they aren't found in any yearbook, and they can't be found in any Hall of Fame. His greatest accomplishments were teaching me and Jimmy and thousands of others, runners, the lessons that they've carried with them for the rest of their life. Over the weekend, I quickly texted my sister, who also ran under Joe Biddy, I said, "I'll be speaking here tonight, do you have any suggestions for what I should say?" I just want to read what she wrote quickly. "I learned more from Joe Biddy about how to live my life with integrity, how to set goals, keeping true priorities in mind, how to be gracious in victory as well as in defeat, how to be part of a team even when abilities varied, how to support my teammates' lives away from the track." I could go on and on, she wrote, "But really, I've long felt that much of what I believe about how to be a good human being, I've learned from Joe Biddy." She closed by writing, "Not sure why I took all those classes in high school, everything that was really essential, I learned on the track." I hate it when my sister is more elephant than I am. Let me just close with one story. In September, after I graduated from high school, I got a call one night. One of the guys a year behind me, Eric Hoss, had died in a car accident. I'd only been at college a few weeks, I had no car flights, homework were expensive, but I knew I had to come home for Eric and for the team. That's what families do. Three years later, when I was 21, my father died. It was late August, Suffolk's school year hadn't yet started, but Mr. Biddy came to the wake, and he brought the whole cross-country team with him. Guys I'd never met before, wearing jackets and tops. They came to support me, because that's what families do. The guys I ran with are still like brothers to me, we still feel connected to the generations that came before us and after us, and the family that Mr. Biddy nurtured. To this day, we'd all run through a brick wall for him because of everything he did for us and taught us. No one is perfect, we'd all make mistakes, and he was right, we don't know all the details, and we have a responsibility to learn from our mistakes. But when sitting in judgment, I think we also have a responsibility to consider the true scope of a person's character and their service to their community. And I hope, and I urge, that you fully consider that, not because of what he has done for us, but because of what he will do for future runners. Thank you.
Three minutes left, three minutes, please.
I'll be quick. My name's Bob Yunam, retired from this district for seven years now. I worked 33 years as a phys ed teacher, and the last 16 as director of athletics. I'll be very honest with you, I'm conflicted because I'm kind of in the middle of, Andy is a friend of mine, I've been in his shoes for, was there for quite some time, and I've unfortunately had to be in this exact situation numerous times. But, I'm a friend of Joe Biddy's, I've worked very closely with him my entire career, I know this decision's not, especially, a decision not to bring back any coach is tough, but someone like Joe Scadger is very difficult, it's not made by one person, I understand that. And I think as people are removed from the situation, maybe things get lost a little bit. If you're not actively involved with the cross-country track program on a daily basis, if you're not in the high school, if you're, if you're not really involved with the athletic department, you don't get a true sense. So, my goal today was really to stand up for Joe and hopefully give you a sense of what I was able to observe through many, many years of, of service here in the district. Joe was in a really unique position, he impacted the most number of kids at Suffolk through those years. I believe he's got 49 years in. He dealt with kids on the cross-country team, it could have been 30 to 40 kids. The big numbers were during winter track, he had anywhere between 100 and 150 kids on our winter track team, and then when he was coaching spring track, we had large numbers there. The, you heard some of the success stories from, from two of the speakers here, or three of the speakers here tonight. I, I don't think this is about the numbers, to be honest with you. Although, obviously, he's got a history of success that's unparalleled in New York, and I would probably stack him up with anybody on a national level as well. But it's the impact that he makes with kids. To have a, a coach with the passion that Joe Biddy has had of running, the connection that he's able to make with kids, and to combine that with a work ethic, has produced an awful lot of results. Jimmy and Frank, great examples of, you know, you know what we've established here, Joe's established here, in our athletic department, and Joe certainly with a direct impact from his standpoint. Now, we've had a ton of kids go on and run in college. We've had big-time Division One kids, scholarship athletes, Division Two, kids running Division Three, but probably the greatest number of kids that we've had didn't run in college. But, you know, I'm very friendly with a couple of runners that Joe had over 45 years ago, and they're asking me to set up dinner with Joe Biddy because of the impact he's made on their lives. I'm sure you've got, you know, through social media, you've heard in the last two months a lot of this stuff. I, I think that's the mark of a special person. When you have an individual, alright, that has knowledge, experience, passion, and the ability to connect with kids, you have something special, and I think that's Joe Biddy. So, I would hope, and I don't know, again, what Amy said was right, we're not privy to all the stuff that happens in personnel decisions. I understand that, but I, but I would be remiss if I would feel guilty if I didn't come here and tell you that I really believe in Joe Biddy, I certainly have been a special, special person, and I would hope that you would reconsider and, and bring Joe back.
My name's Bob Yoderowitz, I have three grown daughters that went through the Suffolk system. Samantha's my middle daughter, she's grown now, she's 30, 31-years-old, she's married, has a nine-month-old baby, that's why she's not here, she's out on Long Island. Anyway, Samantha sent me something that she wanted me to read, and I will be brief, it'll take about a minute and a half, okay? This is from Sam. "A few weeks ago, I was asked to be the keynote speaker at the Women's Sports Day at Suffolk High School. I gladly accepted and truly looked forward, and truly looked forward to the event. When I sat down to write my speech, I began to think about my athletic career and who impacted and motivated me the most besides my parents." I was a three-sport varsity athlete at Spring Valley High School, an All-American college athlete, and a professional softball player. I've been coached by a lot of people, and without a doubt, Mr. Biddy was the first person I ever thought of. I chose to speak about him that day without knowing that something he loved most had been taken away from him, and that was coaching. It wasn't until after I made the speech that I was clued in to what had recently happened. And as an aside, it was after that speech, later that day, that I and my wife told Samantha what had happened. She didn't know that going in. Anyway, back to Samantha, I was a student of Mr. Biddy's and I ran track for him. As a student, he encouraged and believed in me, when many teachers didn't. He knew how to motivate a student who needed that extra push, so I wouldn't be an average student who fell between the cracks. He taught his students how to be a team player and how to work hard and achieve success. As I mentioned in my speech, Mr. Biddy asked me to run track because he knew the importance of being well-rounded and involved in multiple school activities. I soon learned that I never would have, that I would never have another coach like him. He truly cared and believed in every single athlete on his team. He motivated, he encouraged, he pushed, and most of all, he was a true supporter on and off the field. This is proven by the relationships he developed with his athletes, but also in the success he has brought to Suffolk High School. Mr. Biddy is a self-made man, and he built a track program that is known state and nationwide. Nothing was handed to him, he earned his job and his success through hard work and putting in endless hours of his own personal time. He would even show up on Christmas Eve for optional practices for athletes who wanted to continue running during winter recess. He was selfless, taking time away from his family to make sure his athletes had the support they needed.
Aye.
Excuse me. Lastly, "I am now a physical education teacher too. I think of Mr. Biddy often and how much he impacted me as a student-athlete. I am so grateful that I was able to have him as a teacher, but most of all, as a coach. It is extremely disappointing as an alumni at Suffolk High School to hear how this situation has gone down. I hope you reconsider your decision, as you will never find someone as devoted and loyal to their program as Joe Biddy." That's from Samantha. "On behalf of myself and my wife, Gail, Joe is special. And, you know, I heard somebody else say, 'People make mistakes in life, make mistakes of all different degrees.'" "We live in a very, very politically correct time right now where there is almost zero tolerance for the slightest deviation, and I'd ask you to think about, do the right thing," basically, that's what it comes down to, "to do the right thing with Joe. And on behalf of everybody else, students and my daughter, thank you for your time."
Two more speakers. Do you have enough time for two more speakers?
Hello, everybody. I'm Joe Biddy. Jimmy, was that number 102? Give me your cybersecurity. I'd like to thank Dr. Adams and the board for hearing us out, parents, kids, and friends from across the country that have supported this campaign. I retired from teaching after 52 years in 2016, took over Boys' Winter Track in '73, coached it for 45 years until 2017. I started the girls' program in 1978. It was supposed to be a short gig that went on until 2017, 40 years later. Over the years, with the help of several outstanding coaches, these two programs won a combined total of 80 county sectional titles plus 123 other meets. The program developed three, produced three state champions, excuse me, 63 state and federation champions, as well as nine national champions. In 49 seasons of coaching Boys' Cross Country, our boys have averaged 13 dual wins a year against one loss. They had 107 major wins, which includes 15 sectional titles, 13 county titles, two state titles, and in 1993, the New York State Federation Meet. At that time, our state feds, as they were called then, was considered to be the most competitive one raised state meet in the country. In this 2017 race, Suffolk defeated the runner-up team by 108 points, although those guys are here today. To this day, that was my proudest moment as a coach. Next to my family, Barbara, Marcy, and Greg, coaching cross-country has been the most important part of my life since 1969. I take tremendous pride in the athletes that I've coached. It's a sport in which the hardest work is succeed. There are no easy days in our athletes' performances. Our athletes' perseverance has always been steadfast. Each athlete has personal goals and adheres to them during the season. A model that I try to pass on to the kids is what I call the three Cs: consistency, commitment, competitiveness. Consistency in their world means coming to school every day, going to class, going to practice, doing the homework at night. Commitment is keeping what's important to you on the front burner. Competitiveness means leaving it all out there and practicing the competition. I love the way the kids bond together, support each other, and are there for each other in the good days as well as the bad days. I develop friendships that last long after the high school days are over. I've been blessed to be able to work with the kids and their parents and their peers. I've dedicated most of my life to teaching and coaching, and I've loved every single minute of it. I still feel that I must devote our athletes into our program. In conclusion, although I can see the finish line, I'm not ready quite... I'm not quite ready to cross it yet. I know that when I do step down, I will miss terribly the interaction with the kids, parents, and all those associated with this beautiful sport. I would hope that a half-century of total commitment to my profession and to the school district would have earned me the right and the privilege to choose when it was time to leave. Thank you.
Okay, we are up on time. One more? One more? Yes.
My name is Francois Spros, and I'm the mother of two boys who went through the whole school system in Suffolk. And one of them now lives in Southern California. Called me this morning to remind me I must come today. And here I am to pay homage to Joe Biddy. He is... Whatever my son has become, a 44-year-old man now, the best in his character he owes to Mr. Biddy and the cross-country team. When he started high school, he became very sick. And the first race that the team ran, they won, and they broke the cup to Kristoff in his hospital room, and they said they won because Mr. Biddy had said, "We'll run for Kristoff." And I remember I cried. My husband says I cry when he's in the phone booth. Anyway, whatever is good in Kristoff's character today, he owes in part to Mr. Biddy. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll close that portion of the meeting with a vote for participation. Dr. Adams, do you have any closing comments?
I just want to thank everybody for those who spoke, those in the audience for being respectful, again, as I said last time, and I understand your passion and commitment to Coach Biddy. The decision as two coaches, and who coaches and who doesn't coach, and having this, it's not an easy decision. Multiple people, staff members are involved in it, factual issues to be considered as well. But I do appreciate everybody coming here and speaking respectfully, and as Mr. Stasso from RP Connor said, "Gave me the shoes." Anyway, Chair, ready to move to adjournments? Teresa, Teresa, now so moved. Paul, second. All the favor signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you.
You taking this sign home? Absolutely. Good, good, good.